Okay, I'd like to call the special meeting of the Urbana City Council to order. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Barnes?
Present.
Mr. Bowersox?
Present.
Ms. Chenoweth?
Present.
Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Smythe?
Here.
Ms. Stevenson?
Present.
Mayor Pressing?
Here. Is there anyone who'd like to address the Urbana City Council? Did you want to, I think that our Director of Public Works has a presentation.
I'd like to ask Norman Rybode to step forward. Today I'm wearing my different hat on the President of the American Public Works Association OI chapter, and Norm is a recent graduate of the OI Public Service Institute. It's a three-year program. He's our second graduate. Brad Manett was our first with the City of Urbana. And this is a very successful program. We have 120 students that can be anywhere within this three-year program. Program talks about how to be a supervisor, a leader, motivating people, talks about various issues that deal specifically with public works and public service type positions. And it's a good course for those especially that are looking for opportunities for promotion within our organization somewhere else. So, this is a plaque that recognizes his achievements, and we just want to congratulate Norm for graduating. So, congratulations.
Great.
Well, thank you very much, Bill, and we appreciate Norm participating in this. We have excellent employees for the City of Urbana, and they're always willing to learn more and do better. Anyone else want to address the City Council? Yes?
Madam Mayor, is this the time to talk about the snow removal or not?
If you want to, or you can wait until we have the discussion at the committee meeting which follows this one.
I'll wait.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, next we have a presentation from the Urbana Park District.
Did you, I gave you two.
What? Oh, I'm sorry. Ernest Westfield. Rex Bradfield did not want, you want to speak now, or you want to? I don't know what your topic is.
I can do it now.
Okay, go ahead, and just have a seat and let us know your name and address, please.
My name is Ernest Westfield, and I live at 918 North Harvey in Urbana, Illinois. And I'm here tonight to make a plea to the Council because Congress just passed a resolution making May the 20th every year Negro League Baseball Day around the country. And since I live here in Urbana, I thought maybe I could come and get it done to maybe get the Urbana City Council to also do some sort of proclamation or resolution, making May the 20th Negro League Baseball Day here in Champaign, Illinois. I came here years ago with, it wasn't my intention to come to Champaign, Urbana, but because I played baseball in the Negro League, we came here, we played up in Loda, Buckley, Guilford, so this area has a large history as far as baseball is concerned. And I kind of brought this picture here with me. This is Tom Fletcher. His son is Darren Fletcher, who played for the Toronto Blue Jays. This is Satcher Page. We played a game up in Royal. So, all the Negro League teams converge on Champaign, Urbana because of the baseball that we have here. But the thing is, is that when you talk about the Negro League, a lot of people commonly refer to us as the players who played but never got paid. With the resolution out of Washington, that recognition is starting to come our way. And I'm hoping that if the City of Urbana could pass some sort of resolution, I think that the players who struggled just to get to first base, this will start to let them come home if you could do this. Tomorrow, I'm going to be speaking at the Champaign Council. Mayor Swidart has called me, and he's in favor of it because he's aware of the baseball and what took place here. So, I would strongly suggest that you consider it because I think a lot of our kids, they know very little about the Negro League. When I go into the grade schools at the elementary level, the kids are ready for me when I get there. Okay, but the kids that are out here on the street, when you ask them about Josh Gibson, they know nothing about him. You ask them about Satcher Page, they know nothing about him. But when you're asked about Babe Ruth, they know about him. The thing is that we're losing our history, and I think if we can do a resolution here in Urbana, I think our kids will start to look at us as Congress did, it's every year. And so, this year I'm scheduled to be at the White Sox Park. They're going to honor me here. And this weekend, I'll be in Peaking. I'll be there for three days, speaking in their schools, talking about the Negro League. Every year, I'm a guest in Wasika, Casey, Illinois, a small town, not a town as big as Urbana. I thought maybe that the rural areas would be the last to do this, but they're the first to do it. So, I would like to see the City of Urbana do this and maybe have something special. If not for me, if just to recognize the Negro League players. Because years ago, we had so many of them coming here to Champaign, Urbana because of the Eastern Illinois League, the EI League, and a lot of great players came out of here. Darren Fletcher was one of those. A lot of them from Eastern Illinois made it to the major leagues right out of here of Champaign, Urbana. So, this is what I wanted to see. I thought maybe a lot of people had heard I was going to come here to come to listen to me speak, but I guess here for something else. But I hope you will be pleased. Okay?
Well, I think you've come at a very good time because we're going to be celebrating Urbana's 175th birthday.
Thank you.
This year, and we're planning many events. Dennis Roberts is kind of, this is his brainchild, I guess. But we could plan an event. We could not just have a resolution, but we're celebrating the history of Urbana. So, we would like to invite you to participate in that planning.
Thank you. I hope you can make it around when baseball is being played.
You want to have it be in May?
To May, because.
Okay.
The reason they picked May the 20th is the first Negro League game was played on May the 20th of 1920. So, there was a discussion with the museum out of Kansas City that they wanted to be on February the 13th when the first contract was signed. But the players said, "We would like for it to be honored when baseball is being played." And I think the major league teams are going to do it. I know I'm supposed to be in Chicago at a couple of the major league stadiums there, but it's going to be all around the country. But, you know, I think here, May the 20th will be it. And that way, the Little League kids can wear something relating to the Negro League. Maybe even the University of Illinois would allow their teams to celebrate the Negro League.
Okay. I'm sure we can work out something very good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Oh, by the way, I pitched the last All-Star game to Mr. Parkin.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, is there anyone else who would like to address the Urbana City Council? Okay, now let's have the Park District, Vicki Mays. And Michael Walker.
Good evening. I'm Michael Walker. I'm the current President of the Urbana Park District Board of Commissioners, and this is Vicki Mays, our Executive Director. And if I could find it here, I have a brief.
We have a little trouble hearing you. I think you need to get that mic a little bit closer to you.
And before I get started, I would also, since this is a presentation we've used in some other venues, I would just like to say, appreciate the opportunity to come before you here and help inform the citizenry of the referendum that's coming up on February 5th. But I would also be remiss if I didn't thank the Council and the Mayor for the excellent working relationship that the Urbana Park District has had with the City of Urbana for actually many decades. There's been a great deal of intergovernmental cooperation that has taken place between our two agencies over the years to the benefit of our common citizenry, given that the Urbana Park District and the City of Urbana actually are coterminous but separate institutions of government here. But we have received accounting and computer services over the years, have jointly gotten our health care through the city, and the engineering department has helped us. We don't have very much in the way of roadways and certainly have no ability to have an engineering staff. The City of Urbana has elfed out on numerous occasions with issues like that, and I just can't say enough about the terrific relationships at the staff level between these two organizations. And I think it's a credit to this community. And having said that, I would like to move on forward with a little bit of information about the referendum that we have coming up. The City of Urbana is about to be celebrating 175 years. Obviously, we just finished our centennial year at the Urbana Park District. So, and we believe that for 100 years, the Urbana Park District has provided a responsive and efficient and creative parks and recreation system for this community, and that this contributes a great deal to the web of this community and having good, solid families and a great place to live. And at the end of our first 100 years of service, we have gone through a rather extensive strategic planning process. We have fully reviewed the operations of the Park District, and at the same time, also reviewed very carefully one of our oldest parks, Crystal Lake Park. We've gone through an extensive planning process involving outside consultants and a great deal of input from the community itself and surveys and so on. We'd also like to point out that since our last referendum, which was held in 1993, we have in fact expanded considerably the amount of land that the Park District is responsible for maintaining. We do have a couple of additional facilities that we did not have 15 years ago. We've added a couple of parks. And through an intergovernmental cooperation agreement with the county, we manage the Brookins Gym as a recreational facility for the community. And that's the reason this rather large addition in indoor space involved.
That also involves the Urbana Indoor Aquatic Center, too.
Yes.
Really is a very large space.
And yet another intergovernmental cooperation circumstance. In the process of the surveys that we did relative to that planning process, we found of the respondents to the survey, over 90% had visited Urbana Park in the past year. And our satisfaction levels that were found by the surveying firm were essentially off the scale of what they had experienced anywhere else in the nation. And this is a survey firm that has worked with literally hundreds of park and recreation agencies throughout the country. And we are trying to live to a set of standards, one of which is to have all residents live within a half mile of a park or recreation facility. We are at least to the point of 82% success rate in that regard. We have also attempted to measure the visits to the Urbana Parks over a year's time. When we say we have a million visits a year, that's actually, I believe, a very low figure. That has come from, as part again of this planning process, we had co-ots come in and survey people going in and out of Crystal Lake Park and Meadowbrook Park. And we've, quite surprisingly, I think to most people, found that Crystal Lake Park has almost 50% more visitations than Meadowbrook. And we all know how busy Meadowbrook is. And the estimations of the active visits to those two major parks, and then also the visits to our registration involved recreation programs and the Urbana Indoor Aquatic Center, we estimate beyond a million visits per year, just in that sense. This is not including ordinary visits to neighborhood and other parks. So, we do get, I believe, very high usage of our park facilities. Now, the reason we have come to the referendum issue, as part of our strategic planning process, we have looked pretty carefully at our finances. As you may know, the Urbana Park District, as well as many other agencies, went under tax caps 10 years ago. The City of Urbana is immune to tax caps as a home rule entity. But at any rate, for those of us who don't have that privilege, we just do want to mention that cost of providing services, as it has with the city, has certainly gone up dramatically in the Park District since tax caps were enacted 10 years ago. In that 10-year period, the Urbana Park District tax rate has dropped an average of two cents per year. Our tax rate in 97 was 89 cents per hundred dollars of assessed value, and it has dropped to 70 cents in 2007. So, our tax rate has gone down 19 cents in that time period. Similarly, for reasons that are too arcane to explain in a brief presentation of this sort, the actual Park District's share of the total Urbana tax bill has shrunk from 9.7% to 8.6% in that time period. Tax funds from existing property that support Park District services for the citizens have been limited to the Consumer Price Index. It's the effect of the tax cap law. So, with existing property, an average increase of 2.5% a year is what we've been seeing from existing properties. Obviously, there have been some annexations and some new construction which have made the situation somewhat better than that. But we have been rather limited in our tax receipts for our operating funds. Our bond funds, which represent the majority of our capital expenditures, were frozen at $660,000 a year with the initiation of tax caps. And that is one of the reasons why the Urbana share of the tax bill has shrunk faster than anything else. Even though the assessed value in the district has gone up, we got the same amount in bonding money in 2007 as we did in 1997. And we have, on this graph, I don't know if it's visible to all of you, but it shows the increase in costs of a number of things. Obviously, people are used to seeing the gasoline, the diesel fuel, natural gas have gone up pretty rapidly. Employment costs have gone up faster than, averaged over the nation, have gone up faster than the Consumer Price Index. It's really only electricity which has held low there, but in the last couple of years or so, we know electricity is going to be taking off as well. Our current situation, the district has tried to make finances work as long as possible. When tax caps first came in, we projected we would start being in trouble in six to seven years. Thankfully, Urbana has shown more growth than we were projecting in 1997. We've managed to hold things together. But frankly, the parks and facilities are showing where due to age and high use. We have a good deal of deferred maintenance issues that we have very carefully identified as part of our strategic planning process, and we have a lot of things that we need to take care of. As part of our surveys, we've got a very strong message, we believe, from the citizens to take care of the legacy and the parks that we have. The identified highest unmet citizen needs and citizen priorities that we identified through the survey process, through the community meetings, were to reinvigorate and take care of the parks that we have, to construct walking and biking trails, and this is no big shock. Champaign went through a strategic planning process. Everybody wants more trails, wants more both for biking and for hiking. Similarly, in the county, there's a very strong demand for additional trails. And we would like to play our part in providing trails, not just in Meadowbrook Park, but in others. We also have the issue of rejuvenating Crystal Lake Park and the pool there. The new pool at Crystal Lake Park is now 27 years old, and the bathhouse is about twice that age. The last two seasons, we have sprung leaks in the plumbing at Crystal Lake Pool and have lost tens of thousands of gallons of water in that process until such time as we could get those leaks repaired. We have been fortunate enough in each of these two seasons that we have succeeded in getting those repaired. But we know that we're sitting on a facility there that at any time could develop plumbing problems that would be enormously expensive for us to repair. So, we have a great deal to do there to get Crystal Lake Park back to the state that we think this community would like to see it. Lastly, we find a very strong sentiment, we believe, in the community to restore more natural areas and to maintain the existing natural areas. That may seem a misnomer, people, what on earth would you do maintaining natural areas? But in point of fact, when you establish or reestablish natural areas where there are lots of invasive plants coming in from the agricultural uses and other things that are surrounding, there is maintenance of natural areas. It's not to the degree that you have when you're taking care of turf in a park, but there remain costs to maintaining those areas. What we are proposing is a rate increase of 25 cents per hundred dollars of assessed value. This would return the district's tax rate back up to 19 cents that we've dropped since 1997, plus add a little bit of money in there for, mostly targeted to taking care of Crystal Lake Park. With our tax rate and the way that it's dropping under tax caps, we estimate that within three years following this, we would be back down to the level that we were in 1997, and we would be back on a downward glide path with our tax rate. But for myself, and I believe the rest of the commissioners, we believe that this referendum would put us on a sound financial footing for another decade, to be able to handle the kinds of capital needs and maintenance needs that we expect over the next decade, and to do this largely on a pay-as-you-go basis, rather than going out and borrowing a great deal of money, putting money into interest as part of the expense of making these things happen. And so, that is the kind of proposal that we're putting before the voters in hopes that they will see the wisdom of this. We feel that this would be an important investment in this community. The picture you see here is from the renovations at Victory Park here in Urbana, which I think shows a really good example of a neighborhood that the city had targeted actually quite some time ago, through community block grants and other sorts of things. It's been a long process identifying that neighborhood and trying to bring it up to a higher standard. And the activities of the city, the activities of the residents in that area, and they coming forward to the Park District, and when we worked very carefully with the citizens in the Victory Park neighborhood, have put a lot of money into improving Victory Park, got a grant there, that kind of activity, I think, is really making a big plus in the quality of that neighborhood and the attractiveness of that area of Urbana. And I think that the, having the money in the Park District for us to do this in other neighborhood parks will help us keep many neighborhoods in Urbana in better shape. And I think the parks do provide an important role economically in that fashion. And lastly, I can't be here as an advocate since I have my Park District hat on, but I would encourage everybody to vote on February 5th, as this proposed tax rate increase will be on the ballot in the primary election on 5th of February. And for those who would like to learn more, there is far more detailed information on the Urbana Park District website regarding the financial particulars and so on at www. urbannaparks.org.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone have any questions? Dennis Roberts.
The proposal of improvements that you've shown to us for Crystal Lake Park are very impressive. Do you think it would be possible to do any of them if this bonding issue was not possible?
You know, that's going to be something that the board will and the staff will struggle with over the near future, is to try and determine that. I'm concerned that if there's something that significantly happens to Crystal Lake Pool, what our capacity would be to take care of that. I think we would need to look in the long term of what we could just take care of. Right now, with that $660,000 of bond funds that are frozen, that's what we use to replace all of our equipment. That's what we use to do any repairs or improvements, whatever it is. And that's what we use to do new constructions. So, it actually took us two years to earmark the $150,000 that we used to write for the OSLA grant, which is a matching grant to do the Victory Park project. And that was just, that's just a small project. So, if you look at all of those 22, 24 parks and all of the things that need to be done with them, it will be a struggle. I'm concerned of how much of our natural areas that we've restored, that we can protect. So, really, it'll be a tough decision.
I would like to add one other thing. The Crystal Lake Park Master Plan that we have developed is not a 10-year plan. So, we are not saying we could do all that in 10 years, even if we do get the referendum passed. That is a long-range vision for that park. We think we can make some very nice additions to Crystal Lake Park, dealing with the pool, bringing in a destination family playground area. And the one thing that Crystal Lake doesn't have, there's no way to walk a loop in that park.
That's right.
You know, Meadowbrook draws a lot of people there because you can, even if you drive your car there, you can walk a full circle and get your exercise that way. It's very difficult to do that at Crystal Lake. It draws heavily from the neighborhood. It draws heavily from the Carl complex. But I think it would also greatly benefit both in terms of the exercise people can get and the usage that the park will accommodate if we get more trails there.
Crystal Lake Park is, it's a remarkable urban park. It's two blocks from the downtown of Urbana. It's an incredible resource, particularly the walking trails, to get people back and forth from the Carl Campus to Five Points and find ways to get, to invite them into the park from University. And it's just right here, absolutely remarkable urban resource.
Ms. Chenoweth.
Thanks for your presentation, and I agree about Crystal Lake Park. I work three blocks away from Crystal Lake Park, and oftentimes I forget that it's there because we, as a city, haven't yet really connected up to the park with our infrastructure. And partly, that has to do with waiting for Development Davenport Broadway and making those connections. But I do think that as we move forward with this, with the plan, hopefully for Crystal Lake Park and do some of the improvements, we can also partner with you to make sure that people see the park from University Avenue, because currently, you don't know it exists there. If you're on University Avenue, which is main thoroughfare and has, you know, similar kinds of traffic counts to North Prospect. So, it's a very heavily trafficked area, but in some ways, it's a little bit of a hidden gem. I did have a question, which is, I know when you conducted a survey, and it's a little old now, maybe six years ago, on what the current needs were and interests were, and certainly rails and trails were a big part of that public interest. And we've also seen that on the city side. It's great to have, you know, very clear picture of the Carl Park Master Plan. Do you have something similar like that for your intentions in terms of perhaps interconnecting trails or connecting up with things? Or is it mostly the Greenways and Trails Plan that we have?
We have worked very actively over the last four to six years with a county-wide group that's working on a comprehensive trail plan. And in particular, right now, we're working with the city's trail plan. So, being able to connect in with the overall community's trail plan is something that's very important to us and, we believe, to our citizens. Some of the things that we're looking at is the ability to connect along the sailing from the Judge Weber Perkins Road Park to the Chief Shemager Park, to the Hickory Street, to Ambucks Park and Crystal Lake Park. And with that link, we can put a trail link from as far out as the Perkins Road Judge Weber Park into Crystal Lake Park and connect along the sailing and down into the city along the Boneyard, which is just a remarkable connection right there. One of the higher priorities for our citizens were the walking trails, and we can see the few trails that the Champaign Park District, well, Victory Park, if you go look at Victory few trails that the Champagne Park District, well, Victory Park, if you go look at Victory Park, that is a great example of a small, close-to-home trail where people can really get out. You can see moms with babies strollers, you can see people walking through there with groceries, and it's just a small loop, but it makes such a difference. We're seeing now a great concern with level of our obesity in our society, and one of the measures of how we can keep our children and our adults more healthy is how close they live to a park where they can go and engage in active play or walking. So, even those internal pathways are something that's important because they're close to home and people can get to them readily.
So, just to kind of repeat what you said, so this particular ballot question, if the Urbana residents were to vote yes for it, it would help to create that path that you're talking about? That's a high priority path to, along the Boneyard and the Saline, et cetera?
Yes.
Perhaps, of course, if we get the path that goes to Danville?
Yes.
Then we would have a long-term path.
Well, and with the path that goes to Danville, there is a length of abandoned railroad that is, we've proposed as to be abandoned, that goes from Smith Road to 130 to the Walmart. And then Weaver Park is just right there, so creating a trailhead at Weaver Park and getting people down that short rightaway and onto the Danville to Urbana Trail is, or Urbana, let's start here and go there.
My source, they can come over here, too.
Working with Bill and with the sanitary district, with some of the work that's just been recently done for Weaver Park with creating that wetland that also helped to solve a major drainage issue in the Scottswood subdivision, what you can see if you go out there is a clear pathway from Washington to Main Street. And one of our hopes is that we can continue to keep it clear. We've been working with the three agencies to try and find a way to actually put some sort of, even a temporary trail, like a chip limestone trail in there. And, you know, that's one of the things that this would enable us to continue doing, is some of those cooperative things that really have an impact on the community.
Great, thank you.
Lynn Barnes.
I think this is a very important ballot question, and I think that a lot of your goals and the way you played out your master plan fits very nicely with a lot of our goals as a council. And I think, I just want to kind of restate what you said about economic development. I do think that strong parks and parks that are well-kept up, well-lit, make a difference in a community and in a neighborhood. And I think that's something that we're also, that aspect is something we're very supportive of, and thank you for your efforts in that area, and keep them up.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you for adding us to your rather busy agenda tonight.
Okay, the next thing on our agenda is a resolution number 2008-01-001R, adopting the needs analysis for the cable refranchise negotiations. Did you want to comment on that, Ron O'Neil?
Yes, I've brought this needs assessment before this body previously. Also, Brian Grogan from Moss and Barnett, the consultant retained by Champagne and Urbana, has also spoken before you regarding this needs assessment. This resolution, by adopting this tonight, it does not mean that we are necessarily going to end up going forward with every single recommendation. What it does is it gives Mr. Grogan a framework to go forward in negotiating a new franchise agreement with what is now Comcast, which will expire in 2009. So, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to ask those, answer those.
Lynn Barnes.
How will the pieces come back to us then as a council? Are they, you know, kind of where things are at and what pieces are being suggested that we do buy into?
Well, I mean, if there are changes that you feel are necessary, if there are changes that you feel are necessary to be made, they should probably be made before adopting the needs assessment, because that's really what we're doing right now through this resolution. We're saying that as a body, you believe that this needs assessment that's been completed encompasses the desires for the city. Now, if, as a body, you need to communicate things, if something changes, then I suppose you could go through me or, you know, Bill DeJarnet to communicate those to Mr. Grogan if our position changes materially on any of these issues. And I will, from time to time, be communicating back to you.
Give us updates, or?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Danielle Chiniewith.
I'll go ahead and put the motion on the table for us to discuss. I'll move, there's actually two things, but I'll move resolution number 2008-01-001R, a resolution adopting the needs analysis for cable refranchise negotiations. And if I could just speak to that briefly.
Motion by Ms. Chiniewith and second by Mr. Roberts. Ms. Chiniewith.
Thanks, and I saw that there are hands, so I think there are questions, too, but just to speak to it, I think this document, which is large and was our, this is the consultant's report that we're referring to, and as a member of the CU Telecommunications Commission, there's two other commissioners that I see in the audience as well who are here this evening, Rick, our chair, and Barb Gladney, and also Daryl Cruz is here. So, we have been working to try to get ready for the franchise negotiations with what it's now Comcast, that happened actually over the holidays, it's all under Insight that Comcast will be negotiating with. And both cities had sent this, had agreed to cooperate to hire a consultant, and that consultant has put together something that kind of has two pieces to it. And the first, as Ron was talking about, is the needs assessment, which basically says, this is what we found out, this is what the community said, we did a phone survey, these were the kinds of, and then based on what people said, these are the kinds of needs that we see that have arisen from that report. The second piece, and I actually have a second motion that I'll bring for that responds the second piece, is a series of proposals. And if you look at the executive summary, which is kind of page three through seven, that kind of lays out the executive summary for the entire document. And in it, it basically lays out a couple of proposals. And the proposal that I think would be most appropriate for us to move forward with at this time is the proposal to create a kind of, what Mr. Grogan refers to as a public access steering committee or advisory board, that basically would start to work with the decision-makers of different, it would be made up of decision-makers and work with decision-makers to explore what kinds, what kind of public access entity do we want to put together? Now, I think that part of what hasn't, maybe with the holidays, et cetera, wasn't communicated to council, is that Champagne took a preliminary vote, I believe, I was not at the vote, but I believe it was a preliminary vote, to support a fifth channel, which was one of the things that came out of the needs assessment, but not necessarily to increase franchise fees in Champagne at this time. Champagne only collects a portion of what it's allowed to collect in terms of franchise fees. Urbana collects the full amount that is allowed. So, that's the decision, and that's consistent, actually, with Champagne's votes in the past. They have, the council has taken that stand in the past. That said, I think there's difference between, and I think Champagne's vote demonstrated this, a difference between, we don't want anything to do with public access, and we don't feel like we want to increase the fee that cable subscribers are paying at this time. So, they said the second, not the first, and they did support the channel. And I think a piece of this, I'll speak for myself and for the Public Access Committee that I served on in the Cable Commission, is that what is so surprising in the survey results that are actually in the appendix here, and he summarizes them, is what a large viewership our PEG channels have, and actually, how often and how cherished they are. And that includes public educational and government programming. So, I think that in some ways, and also looking at how many public, just public access members we have in Urbana and how it's gone from seven to over 100, and that there's the Public Access Report which you have received that has all the nonprofits and churches who support the addition of a public access channel and us really growing those services. So, I think the question, as I see it on the table for our communities to look at is, okay, we have a sense of what the need is, we see that public access, that the PEG channels generally are very supported and well-watched, that public access is supported, and then there's the question of how do we do it? What's the model? How do we fund it? How do we make it successful? Who's involved, et cetera? And those pieces, I mean, the Public Access Committee that existed before, and people, someone raised this question, why are we making another Public Access Committee? The Committee of the Cable Commission is, was a committee of people who weren't necessarily decision-makers and didn't represent every single entity, like the U of I, I don't think was adequately represented at the table. We need to make sure the school districts are represented, et cetera. So, there's a lot of people who are interested in public access, but, so that committee has actually been dissolved. It existed simply to do our own internal needs assessment before we hired this consultant. Then the consultant picked up with that kind of informal needs assessment and did a scientific assessment, which actually confirmed a lot of the things that came out of the Public Access Committee. So, at this point, I think the decision-makers, the councils, the U of I, Parkland College, the school districts, there's a list kind of here, need to really decide, how can we do this? Given where Champagne stands, given where Urbana stands, given where the U of I stands, is there something that each of us could bring to the table to make this happen? So, that's kind of, I guess, sometimes when you talk about cable things, it gets tangled and you get reports that are this big, and I just wanted, it didn't come with them, I just wanted to provide a little bit of background and history as to where we're at, and then to say that I think, I do urge us to move forward with the resolution that Legal has drafted. I know Champagne is prepared to pass a similar thing with some changes specifically around the funding issue, so, and there may be other changes that council introduces, but that's what I understand it to be, so that they can get started with negotiations. And in parallel, I think we need to, and I will bring this motion next, a motion that directs staff to help establish this public access steering committee.
Lynn Barnes.
Thanks, Danielle, because that was helpful. Based on what Ron said, I guess my concerns are mainly under items one and two under the executive summary. And I would, I support, you know, growing public access, but I have a concern about our budget. And I think that, you know, what's being talked about in here is that Urbana would have a significant additional outlay of monies potentially in the future, and that worries me, because I think we need to see where we stand in terms of our revenue, and I'm not sure this would be my choice for highest priority of expenditures of those dollars.
If I could just add that, at least as far as two goes, this is coming out of franchise fees that are already coming in and assessed. I don't know if that was clear or not, that this is part of, and what is recommended here?
And we already take, we already go up to the maximum of that now, correct?
Yes, yes, we get five and two, okay? And, which is, by the way, I've found out a rarity among municipalities. I don't think there's anybody else in Illinois who's getting that, so we need to count ourselves as in pretty good shape that way. And it's just a matter of apportioning some of those operational funds to do this. I'm not advocating one way or another, I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay, that's helpful. And, but on number one, it talks about capital cost outlay.
Yes.
Correct?
Right.
There's a significant chunk of money there.
Ms. Chiniewith.
Yeah, let me speak to that. You know, who knows what negotiations is going to look like, but based on other cities and other communities, we can talk a little bit about what happens. One thing is, it's my understanding and it's my reading of this document and my participation in it, that it does not include any increase in fees to Urbana cable subscribers or to Urbana taxpayers. So, I just want to make that clear. I personally wouldn't support, at this point, an increase for that purpose, and we are capped out, and I, so what, so that's one thing. The second thing is, in the past and current refranchising processes, at times, and I think the twin cities of St. Paul and Minneapolis are a good example of this, will include in franchise that the cable operator provide capital outlay for a center or for a station, et cetera. So, I think that in that, the assumption is that as part of the negotiation, we would say, I mean, you're renting our space, you're using this, you know, you have access to these number of channels, and in return, you would give us something. So, this is not, I just want to make it clear, it wouldn't be coming out of Urbana taxpayer pockets.
Lynn Barnes.
My second time speaking to this. But, or and, this would be coming out of our, potentially our budget, and given what Ron said, this will be a guide, if we approve that this is a guide. And the way it's written in number one is that it's a recommendation that the two cities ante up for this capital money. So, that's my concern, is if this is a guide, then it kind of assumes that we would be supportive of this kind of capital outlay, and I'm not sure we're prepared to be that strong on that at this point.
Mr. O'Neil.
I wanted to clarify and maybe put up some finer details on it. You don't commit to anything that's in here that it's going to happen or that you're going to actually do what it says. What it is, is that it's essentially saying, the consultant's saying, here's my findings, and you're saying, okay, I accept your findings as is. There's still, he's not going to do anything that this body does not want to have done with regard to negotiating. This is just providing a framework. As we go forward, if he, if, you know, at the direction of the council, you know, there's something that you want modified or you'd like communicated to the consultant as he negotiates with Comcast, that certainly can take place.
Dennis Roberts.
One of the things that I was very pleased to see was recommended was the establishment of a, not only the requirement of a fifth channel, but also a location to create a public center that was convenient for the use of all the citizens of both communities. And I know that, from my experience, having lived in Tucson, and this was like about now 25 years ago, I'd have to say, their, that community, which is a larger community, but has an average number of cable subscribers in it by percentage, I believe, did require their, in their franchise negotiation, not only the creation of an independent community resource, but they got an incredibly nice community station in, developed in a warehouse that had two complete filming studios and seven editing bays, and multiple resources that could be lent out to the community as far as equipment goes. And I have often been amazed at what is possible to get through cogent negotiation. So, I think that it's much better to aim high and expect state far-reaching and visionary goals, because, you know, they're going to be chipped away in the process of negotiation. So, I think it is important for the community also to, if we establish this steering committee, to have a discussion about that vision and how to move toward it. So, I think really that the recommendations that were, that came out of the assessment were very positive and allowed us to act with a lot more vision. I'd rather, I'd rather work on this franchise with a concept of vision rather than fear.
Brandon Bowers-Sachs.
Yeah, one brief comment. I'm supportive of the report and excited by it. I think about Lynn's point, I just want to make sure I understand it, too. It's my understanding, and correct me, Ron or Danielle if I'm wrong, that the expenditures talked about in the idea of building a station, outfitting it with equipment, are expenditures that as we go to the table, we're asking Comcast to pay 100% of. We're asking them in renegotiating to give us the money to set aside for the facility and for any equipment. It's not that we're talking about a plan here or any commitment on our part, does the city, to invest general fund tax monies of the city in building or doing something. It's that this is our starting point for saying, from Comcast, here's what we need, the funds from you, as you want to the funds from you, as you want to sign a 10 or 15-year renegotiation with us. We need these funds from you to build the facility and open it. Is that right?
Not, not quite.
Okay. Describe that.
If you look carefully at, for example, number one, on page three of the assessment, if, for example, I'm just glancing down, looking in the middle of the paragraph, capital costs for a new studio will be approximately $400,000, which Urbana and Champaign should share equally, or could split in a two-thirds to one-third manner, with Champaign paying the largest share. That money, though, would come out of the franchise fees. In other words, there'd be no new fees assessed, no new taxes assessed, we would be committing, both cities would be committing a certain amount of their franchise fees to do it. What we're asking for the negotiating table from Comcast would be a fifth channel, a true standalone public access channel, that would be produced out of this facility that we're proposing. Now, you know, Champaign has not committed to doing this. This may never happen, but we may still get the fifth channel, you know? And that's what we're really trying to do. What we're really asking Comcast for is bandwidth. That's what we're negotiating for, is really bandwidth.
Any other comments on this resolution? Ms. Chinowith.
I just want to clarify, both in response to Lynn and Ron, and I'm, I know this is my third time speaking, but I'm trying to give information in particular about this. And it's difficult, because the regulatory, the legislative landscape keeps moving on us. It is the case that cable companies have challenged capital outlays upfront. And it's unclear to me at this point whether or not that is completely off the table. I think that, I could be, I think it's my understanding that that, that as long as Comcast, or it may be AT&amp;T in the future, agrees to negotiate with us, that lots of things are open and are on the table. So, so there's a lot of ways that can be funded. The second thing, and it's really at the end of page three, I'm reading this, I've read this multiple times, I'm reading it again now, and yes, it looks like, from the language, it looks like, oh, the cable bill could increase by X dollars. It actually says that in the middle of the page. What's interesting, if you look at the end of the page, is that the City of Urbana One has set aside, we've been setting aside, monies through the PEG fund, with the thought of doing a significant upgrade, whether it's here in the city, or whether it's elsewhere, we have about $200,000 that we've been saving, as we do for, with a lot of funds when we're getting ready for some kind of expenditure. So that's one thing to know, is that we're not, that's, we actually have something in savings that we could do something with. And the second is, if you just read, at the end of page three, it says, "In addition, continuation of the 2% should not raise the Urbana customers' monthly bills, as is already on the statement." So I actually don't think we're able to increase those in any way on people's statements. It's certainly not our intention to do so. I think that there's significant revenue coming, sufficient revenue coming in from Urbana. The issue has been more, are we going to do this with Champaign or not? Are we going to do it with U of I or not? And that's why my second motion is really focused on those partnerships, because we have to decide, how, what's this going to look like in the end? So I just want to be clear about that, is, you know, that it could, in negotiations, especially in the current regulatory environment, it could go a lot of different ways. But I certainly don't see it as our intention that we would be doing any kind of increase in fees.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve this resolution. It was a motion by Ms. Chinowith, seconded by Mr. Roberts. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Okay, Danielle Chinowith, you have a motion?
Yeah, I just have a motion to accompany that. And this, it's a city council motion that was in your packets regarding the consultant's report and the PEG franchise negotiations. And essentially, it's a motion to direct staff to pursue a joint Champaign-Urbana Public Access Steering Committee, as is enumerated in this report. And to report back to each city council, we set a date of October of 2008, to try to sync up with the negotiation process. The committee's charge would be to present a workable transition plan for Champaign-Urbana Public Access. And then there's listed a list of components for that plan, including things like funding options and the potential impact to city budgets, and cable subscribers, sample budgets, demonstrating potential revenue needs and operating expenses, personnel and staffing needs, a detail of how this governance structure would work, a facility, studio space requirements and equipment needs, possible studio locations, and see what would be acceptable to both cities, a roadmap outlining the necessary steps to ensure a smooth transition from public access kind of being tucked under the wing of UPTV, our PEG channel, to something that is more standalone and is a fifth channel. And in particular, the steering committee would both be made up of and seek to meet with representatives of U of I, Parkland, it would be both public school districts, the at-large community member appointed by each mayor, and two members from the UPTV Commission, two members from the Cable Commission, and one staff member from each city. Let's see, and they would solicit ideas from interested community members and organizations. So my motion is as it's written here, and I summarized it for brevity's sake.
I second your motion.
Motion by Ms. Chinowith, seconded by Mr. Roberts. Any discussion? Ms. Barnes.
Just a quick question. Have you guys yet approached the other entities about their interest in possibly doing this?
Well, I serve on the Cable Commission, and we have, we actually have, you know, Stan Yagi from the U of I, and Tom from Parkland, and folks from Champaign. We work closely with Jeff Hamilton from Champaign, and Ken Pirat from Champaign City Council. So we, we actually, you know, signed off on this needs assessment report as a Cable Commission. I think that what's needed now, in some ways, is, and it will, it will include people from that Cable Commission, is people who can pull together this proposal. Now, Champaign has not made a final, we're actually voting first. Champaign hasn't made its final decision.
On this piece?
On this piece. They just had the preliminary kind of committee of the whole, and that was back in early December. So they will be voting on it, and, you know, we will see what the details of exactly what they decide to do. But it's our, it is my understanding at this point, that the main concern has to do with funding, not with the other aspects, such as the creation of this Public Access Steering Committee.
Okay, are there any other questions or comments on this motion? Mr. Roberts.
I just support it, because I think it lays out for the community a smart, intelligent way to pull together and have a common vision at this time. Right now, you know, we know what we think. We have a, we've hired a consultant, he's come out with some suggestions. Champaign is making their decisions. But as we actually enter the negotiation, which is coming to us pretty soon, we would be in a stronger position if we all had a visual, had a vision that we all agreed and supported. And also, it would give the community a good foundation to go forward if we actually had a sketch or a plan of how that could financially be conceived, how it could be structurally conceived, how the materials and the resources of the community that exist together could be more highly used and pooled to achieve the end of an independent, independent new channel. And I'm very excited, actually personally, because we, here in Urbana, we have two new, fairly new employees who are coordinating the UPT channel with us, Kate Gorman and Jason Liggett. And both have expressed a very keen interest to start seeing the community create new individual, original programming for our channel. And I totally support that, that move very much. I think it's very creative, and this resource can only enhance that direction.
All right. All those in favor of this motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Next is ordinance number 2008-01-001, and ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance. So this is for the Cunningham Avenue corridor study. And we have Tom Carino to explain this.
Evening. You have before you a budget amendment for $75,000 in TIF four funds for the Cunningham Avenue beautification study. Both the TIF four plan and city council have identified this as a necessary project. The summer of 2007, the city issued a request for proposal for professional services to assist with this project. The selection committee included both the mayor and councilman Roberts, and the selection committee did decide to go with CBA. CBA has extensive experience with similar projects, and scope of work is attached as part of your packet. Some items of note in the scope are that they do have in-house expertise related to conducting market analysis, which will be a big part of that project. And they also included a public art subconsultant as part of the project, so some of the highlights of CBA. The $75,000 is being transferred from the TIF four fund balance. Therefore, there's no immediate fiscal impact on this year's programs or services being offered in the TIF. However, I should note that the $75,000, the transfer of the $75,000 does affect future programs for the TIF, in that that money will not be available later on for construction of the improvements identified as part of the plan. So again, no impact this year, but certainly cash flow situation in the future will be affected.
Dennis Roberts.
Is there appropriate questions?
Yes.
Okay. Of course, I support this plan. I mean, it's, I think it's, just don't get me wrong. I thought, this is a very important plan. I think it's important to begin beautification of this main artery into Urbana, just as we have agreed to have plans to beautify and to re-energize both South Philo Road, which has the benefit of being a position of, an area of new construction and new development. And also, University Avenue is going to be reevaluated the same way and supported. So, and I am very pleased that we're finally getting along and starting to reevaluate North Cunningham. Is the, we've hired a very, I feel very good consultant. Are the fees that we're going to be paying for the charrette and all the various steps, are they basically in line with the consulting fees at this time? Are we, are we getting a little bit extra here for our money, or?
Well, the, the original scope was considerably higher than this. We have worked with the consultant to pare it down, taking into account the services that we absolutely needed. The Philo Road beautification study was a study that was done less expensively. However, there are different items to be looked at along Cunningham Avenue than along Philo Road. Philo Road is a shorter corridor, there was minimal engineering needed, it's not a state route. Those are all the things involved with Cunningham that make this a more complicated project. So I think staff has taken some time, worked with the consultant, to make sure that we're getting exactly what we need at a reasonable price.
We, I want to continue my discussion a little bit. We do have a very extensive and well-compiled report called the Cunningham Avenue Corridor Redevelopment Plan that we published in 2001. Is the fact that we have done significant research on the background of Cunningham Avenue useful to the consultant at this time? And are we able to reduce some of the necessary preliminary steps that they might have had to spend time here doing by providing them all the details we have from that plan?
Absolutely.
I mean, it is, the plan is several years old, of course, by now, it's nine years old.
Sure. That obviously was and is going to be the first document that the consultant looks at. As far as the market study, they've, they've already asked us to help them compile some information related to the market study. As in any plan, when updating a plan, the first thing is to look at the existing plan. And so that's obviously, it was their first step in deciding whether to submit a proposal. And now that we're moving, it is the first step in putting together the new plan.
And one more question. Actually, I had eight, but I'm going to limit them down, for the, for the sake of everybody here. I can talk to you, some other issues later on. Really, they're all supportive, but I do have questions. Does the plan stop at, the boundary of the fourth, the fourth TIF district comes to just about the development of the five points intersection on the north side of that construction that we're like, we're developing now? Is there any way of getting them to look farther south in this, because it's being, because it is being supported by funding? But I would, I would love them to evaluate to, south of University Avenue, to the point of the viaduct, the railroad viaduct, because the railroad viaduct is probably the largest feature on the entire length of Cunningham Avenue. And it is, if there is one place where beautification might occur, and I know that we have done some plannings along the side, I would be very curious to hear what their comments are concerning that feature of Cunningham Avenue. But it's, I'm afraid it's too far south to be included in the study.
Yeah, it is part of the Boneyard Study.
Particularly?
It would be Vine Street at that point, right?
Yeah.
We'd have to rename this whole thing.
Yeah, okay. All right. I just thought, these people are such excellent, and they have a really strong art component in this, I thought it would be great to include a pass-by on their concept of what we could do with that.
I think the plan right now is to, to go from the intersection of Cunningham and University, north. Now, the consultant has been flexible in that originally, the scope was to go to the interstate. However, we've mentioned that with improvements happening north of the interstate, we'd like to include that, and they've been flexible with us on that. So we'll certainly talk to them about that. But my understanding is, right now, we're going from University to north of the interstate.
Because if we could go a half a block farther south, we would include that structure, and I think that's a really interesting question, but okay. Your recommend?
We do need a motion here.
Okay. We're having conversations.
Does anyone have a motion on this ordinance?
I'd like to move that we approve this ordinance.
And I'll second that.
Okay, motion by Lynn Barnes, seconded by Dennis Roberts. Any further discussion or questions? If not, would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowers-Sachs?
Yes.
Ms. Chinowith?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smye?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mayor Pressing. Yes. Okay, that ordinance passes. Next is reports of officers. Did you want to give a report?
Absolutely. This is a little late in the month, later than normal, but I do have the monthly economic development report. Pass that out. Just to highlight a couple of items, you should see a couple of new and exciting tenants at Lincoln Square in the coming months, some announcements upcoming, so that should be great news. Also, last week, Menards presented to the Plan Commission in a preliminary work session, and they will be coming back to present to city council as part of a work session in an upcoming meeting. The pines at Stone Creek Commons by the Atkins Group down at Windsor Road and Philo Road, Monocles is nearing completion, and Bucy Bank actually opened just today. So some exciting new projects down there. And then also, Anna Halkhalter has been working diligently with the Public Art Task Force. Actually, the Public Art Task Force has a meeting tomorrow night, and they will be making an official recommendation to council in an upcoming meeting. So that's also moving forward. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Brandon Bowers-Sachs.
Tom, yeah, I have two quick ones. First, about the downtown parking study. I see there was a public stakeholders meeting with downtown businesses. Is there another? I haven't heard, like, engagement, the word on the street, you know, it just hasn't been discussed. I work in downtown, so I am in and out of these shops, and nobody's yet sort of talking about it, as if there's big awareness of the downtown parking study. Is there another chance to engage more of the business owners downtown? Or is the study, public input piece done and moving on at this point?
Economic development has been involved in the study. However, the downtown parking study is being administered by Public Works. I know that the consultant did meet one-on-one with many downtown stakeholders, including businesses. But I will, I'll actually follow up and find out what the schedule is from then. But I will, I'll actually follow up and find out what the schedule is from this point, specifically related to public input.
Okay, that'd be great. Also, if you could just tell us a little bit about 14 Brushes Art Gallery, I hadn't even heard of it. Tell us maybe where it is. It sounds like they utilized our gallery district incentive program to open a new gallery.
They did. 14 Brushes is, it's actually, I believe it's both a studio and a gallery. And it is on the second floor on Main Street. It's actually above Mirabel Bakery in that area, and it's been a great addition to downtown. And they did utilize the gallery district incentive program. So that would be the second business to use that program after Hartling Gallery used it.
Thank you very much, Tom. I think Libby Tyler might have something she'd like to tell us.
I gave you all a copy of an article at your places, and it's very exciting. I just wanted to show you the magazine that this came out of. It's about the designation of West Urbana as one of the 10 great neighborhoods in the United States, back this last October by the American Planning Association. So they featured all the neighborhoods, as well as a list of great streets, in this January issue of Planning Magazine. And it's just exciting to see Urbana featured, excuse me, on, I think it's page nine, there's a nice paragraph with our mayor's quotation regarding the designation. And then page 10, there's a lovely picture of a West Urbana home that's featured. So I wanted to bring that to your attention.
I have to say that I met the author at my brother's wedding reception in Seattle.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Libby. I do have, are there any other officers who have reports to make? Okay, I have a report, and on the civilian police review board, I've appointed Tom Costello to be the chair. That was in the ordinance that I would do the appointment. And the, the schedule for the training has been set up, and there is, these actually, they picked Mondays, that seemed to be the thing that was mostly available for these people. But there will be a joint session with the city council on Monday, January 28th. They do have rather long sessions, they go from 5:30 to 9:30. So you wouldn't be expected to go beyond what you need to do for the city council. But they will all be recorded, so if you're interested in the topics, you can participate in that way. And if we have to give special sessions for council members, if you're interested in something, we will do that. Okay, I've also appointed Robert Lewis to be on a task force that Champagne set up for studying Parkland dedication. And I believe we have no further business, so this meeting is adjourned. And next is Heather Stevenson for the committee of the whole.